All right. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. Commissioners check-ins, Monday, March 25, 2024, 2:02 PM. My name is Ty Manzger, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Carolina Mejia. We have Commissioners Gary Edwards and Emily Claus on Zoom. For public virtual attendance, may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We're also joined by Inram County Manager Robin Campbell and Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder. And we are here for our weekly Commissioners check-in. We have an executive session slated to start off the meeting. The meeting lasts from 2:00 to 4:30, but it looks like for 60 minutes, we will be involved in an executive session pursuant to RCW 4231-101B to consider selection of a site for acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price. Purchase of a building is a topic, and Commissioners action may follow.
Commissioner Manzger, I'd like to propose to start us off with only 30 minutes because this might go quite quickly.
Okay, then we'll go 30 minutes, and if we need to extend, we'll come back out and extend. So it's 2:03. Thank you. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. Commissioners check-ins, Monday, March 25, 2024, 2:02 PM. My name is Ty Manzger, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Carolina Mejia. We have Commissioners Gary Edwards and Emily Claus on Zoom. For public virtual attendance, may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We're also joined by Inram County Manager Robin Campbell and Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder. And we are here for our weekly Commissioners check-in. We have an executive session slated to start off the meeting. The meeting lasts from 2:00 to 4:30, but it looks like for 60 minutes, we will be involved in an executive session pursuant to RCW 4231-101B to consider selection of a site for acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price. Purchase of a building is a topic, and Commissioners action may follow.
Commissioner Manzger, I'd like to propose to start us off with only 30 minutes because this might go quite quickly.
Okay, then we'll go 30 minutes, and if we need to extend, we'll come back out and extend. So it's 2:03. Thank you. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. Commissioners check-ins, Monday, March 25, 2024, 2:02 PM. My name is Ty Manzger, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Carolina Mejia. We have Commissioners Gary Edwards and Emily Claus on Zoom. For public virtual attendance, may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We're also joined by Inram County Manager Robin Campbell and Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder. And we are here for our weekly Commissioners check-in. We have an executive session slated to start off the meeting. The meeting lasts from 2:00 to 4:30, but it looks like for 60 minutes, we will be involved in an executive session pursuant to RCW 4231-101B to consider selection of a site for acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price. Purchase of a building is a topic, and Commissioners action may follow.
Commissioner Manzger, I'd like to propose to start us off with only 30 minutes because this might go quite quickly.
Okay, then we'll go 30 minutes, and if we need to extend, we'll come back out and extend. So it's 2:03.
All right, we're back for the Commissioners check-in for March twenty fifth. It's two thirty-three P M. We just completed our thirty minutes of executive session. And I do think we have a action to take after the session we just had regarding this building issue. Is there a motion, Vice Chair?
I would like to make a motion that we rescind the authority given to the interim county manager last week to pursue an offer on a specific building that we were moving forward on for a sheriff's department and give further authorization to pursue with our Realtor, the other building.
An offer on a building in the Tumwater area.
In the Tumwater area.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motions been made and seconded, as stated by the Vice Chair. Is there any discussion?
Clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we including the RFP in this motion?
That is my bad. I would like to amend my motion to include the direction to staff to also do concurrently an RFP for a building.
I will resecond that motion.
Okay, the second motion amended has been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion?
Thank you.
Call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Any pose. Motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you guys.
All right, so next up is F J C Control Room. This is a listed as a pending decision from a March twentieth, twenty twenty-four briefing to the board.
Yes, Commissioners, as you heard last week, or even longer ago than that, we have challenges with the control system at the F J C. It is not working. The Band-Aid fix did not stop the bleeding, if you will. It was not a fix. So the proposal before you at this point is for us to, we, to expand a contract we already have to do the design work. We're working on controls at the jail, the adult jail. We would like to have that same consultant look at the feasibility of the similar or same system at the F J C, do the design work, and then before we take a next step to do any work, we'd be looking at the feasibility of a phased-in project while we identify funds to be able to pay for it. Is that pretty much where we're at?
Okay, questions? I have one. The proposal that we talked about last week was to do kind of a phased-in approach, and is that what you're going to be doing? Is that what this proposal is geared to design, or is it to design more comprehensive overhaul of the entire system? What's the scope of what's being proposed?
Our scope would be to meet with Jason and with Ted to determine the requirements in totality. And as a part of the exercise with our design group, and again with Jason and Ted, would then be to break that down into segments of work from a priority and criticality perspective, and then bring that back to the board in order to be able to hopefully fund the most critical parts first and then have a longer-range plan in place for the completion of the entire program.
So Rick, we were talking last week about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
What does two hundred and fifty thousand dollars buys?
The two hundred and fifty thousand dollars buys us about thirty, let's say, contact points. And I'll just put this in round, I guess, round conversation, and that is a door on a detention cell would have two points. One would be for the intercom and one for the door. Other places have cameras associated with it, and so you, we, two hundred and fifty dollars basically gets you to pick thirty points that you would want to have.
Three points, but one door is two points.
Right.
So that doesn't get...
Some doors are three points also.
Correct. So it doesn't get you very far at all?
No, it doesn't.
So that's why I think it's important to get the design, to see what a reasonable way to chunk the project up would be. We need the design of what is the whole project.
Get chunking it up.
And how can we chunk it up? Because the, I did get a note from Ted, Ted Bryant, who, he is very concerned about a phased-in project.
Yeah.
And I told him, you know, we'd be, we'd do the design and then figure out, is it feasible to chunk it up? What would chunking it up get us? So we need the design. Did the two hundred and fifty thousand include the design work? And if not, how much is that going to cost?
Two hundred and fifty, my understanding is that was more, that was really the construction cost.
How much is the design going to cost?
We really don't have that at this point.
Give us a rough...
If it's overall two million dollars for the system there, you can expect fifteen percent to maybe twenty percent total for design. And so, what's that, three hundred thousand maybe?
That would be in addition to the two hundred and fifty. This is where I was telling you last week, don't hang your hat on two hundred and fifty.
The jail camera, which is the entire jail camera system design, I believe is only ninety thousand for the entire Thurston County Correctional Facility. So if it's the same designer doing the other building, I don't see it being that expensive.
But it could be easily a hundred thousand.
Potentially.
Can we ask juvenile court to absorb this, the design cost?
I have to look at their budget to see what their capacity to absorb would be this year. And I, so I can't say yes or no on the spot.
I would like to know that, if they can absorb it.
That's what I was wondering. Okay.
We were talking last week, there was some, there's some carryover money. We had some...
That's in the general fund.
Yeah, that we could talk about obligating towards this, because it's like a one-time expense.
Let me look at detention sales tax, though.
Okay.
You know, the, it's a sales tax, it's the revenue, and we know that that was coming in just right around where we were projecting last year, so it's not like we've got extra revenue coming in. But we can look at how many of those correction deputy F T Es that are paid with detention sales tax were vacant and resulted in vacancy savings. Maybe there's something left there.
Okay.
So I'll look back to, if there's any capacity, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't bet on it.
Okay.
So if we were to say thumbs up to this proposal, we, we don't know if we're spending seventy-five thousand, a hundred, four hundred thousand, Rick said, twenty percent of a two million dollar project. We could be spending four hundred thousand to design what this jail contact point system needs? I mean, isn't it?
Wait, I'm...
I'm sure we've gone over this, so I apologize for asking it again, but I mean, you know, are we trying to do some kind of new upgrade thing, or are we just replace? Like, why does it take, why does it take so much design to just replace what's already there? I mean, it's already working. Like, we're not trying to open new doors.
It's not working.
It's the same doors. Well, I mean, it worked before.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, why are we, why don't we just buy the thing that's there and reinstall it?
It's not produced anymore. Like, the software, it's like twenty-year-old software, right? And it's just, it's not produced anywhere.
We have to have a new software system.
Essentially, and, and everything talks to each other. And, you know, it's all got to go back to one central station where somebody's got control of the whole facility, and all those things have to align, otherwise it's, you know, a giant walking liability.
It's so bad. I went there last week, and I was like, I can't even... All of my concerns about how much to spend on this, most of them went out the window, and I was like, this is bad.
Yeah, and it was designed as a modern facility where you can sit and control, and you flick switches and open everything up. It's not designed like one forty years ago where you would go and key everything in, and we're, you know, like, if it was designed that way, it was analog, if this was an analog juvie, we wouldn't care.
And I'm not...
Abu can't steal the jailer's keys from...
Yeah, yeah, the little Abu.
Little open sesame.
Yeah.
Where I kind of turned, and I don't, I want to be careful, of course, how much we spend on it, but it really is a safety risk for the youth who are in there. Like, if they have an emergency or a crisis, they can't tell anybody. There's no way to even see them. That's really, like, if they're having a mental health crisis, nobody knows unless they're doing their routine checks.
Something with peanut butter in them, and they're allergic, and nobody knew that, or, you know, there's all kinds of scenarios that are sketchy, and then the safety of the employees as well. So what, like, my, sorry, sorry. We're having a discussion about, and I, maybe this isn't totally germane, but, like, I think about us making this big investment and bringing this place completely up, you know, on the level, while we're also having this discussion about neighboring counties wanting to partner with us and have contracts to pay us to be there. And to me, that needs to be a big discussion as well, because if we're making big investments in making sure this place works, we need to also make sure that this place is being used to its full capacity. And, I mean, I, maybe I can, I can kick Commissioner Mejia to talk about that, because I know that she's had discussions with folks, but, like, there needs to be some willingness from, you know, our different partners to, to bring on these contracts that help us cover the costs in the long term, because if we have a, if we've got this facility and it's working at a hundred percent, but it's only filled ten percent, that, that's, that's a poor investment just from that perspective. And then we've got neighbors in Gray's Harbor and Mason County that they're not able to make these investments in their facilities, and they've got needs that we can support, and it also helps us pay for our, you know, our, our, our needs and our costs. That all needs to, like, jive.
What, what I wanted to say was, just going back to when we first had this discussion at the last meeting, I felt like the idea of building the design into the people that are doing the jail, like, that came up, like, organically during our meeting. So you walked in the door, I'm looking at you, Jason. You walked in the door basically saying, there's an option on the table for the Commissioners to do something. And you weren't saying, spend four hundred thousand on design and then maybe two hundred and fifty on thirty contact points. You were basically saying there was an option to be considered to purchase the thirty contact points and get some of the system working. And then we thought, well, maybe it would be more efficient to build the design into the, when we were talking it through. So I just want to make sure I know the full set of options that I have.
Right. So we can't do the system without design work. There, there needs to be design. That, that, the guys weren't talking about that, because perhaps they, you know, are so, every, every project needs design that they didn't even think to state it. But there is a cost for design, and it must be done.
Hey, Commissioner Mejia, I can say that when I, I kind of gave you the fifteen to twenty percent range, I mean, that's just, that's this kind of thing for a budget. This is a really specific project. I would say a lot of actual investigative technical work has already been done as a part of the jail project, so the design would not have to go back and explore three different camera options and put together drawings and specifications for, for all of that. That's, that's already been completed as a part of the project that Rich is working on. So, you know, the three to four hundred thousand dollars, I'm just thinking as we're talking here, it's, I don't think, I mean, I can virtually guarantee it would not be that high because of the pre-work that's been done. That's, you know, we could integrate on that, but it's, it, it, it isn't zero.
And I hear what you're saying, too. I mean, it's, it's like, when the, when the proposal was made to fill the juvenile jail with external juveniles, and the court said, don't do that, that's one thing. But now we're being asked to put millions of dollars into the facility, and we still have that proposal on the table. It's a little different. Like, you know, it's one thing to say, okay, you know, it is what it is. We built it. It's going fine. Let's not get involved in this contract. But now we're being asked, on top of that, to invest millions. And is that kind of what you're getting at?
Yeah, and we're kind of under utilizing the, maybe not, I don't know, but we're, it's under capacity, right? It's not filled out. There, you know, there, there's, there's potential revenue for us to be able to help the youth maybe better than their communities can, and we're making investments in this facility, so it should be used. And we're making investments in this facility, so it should be used out to the best of its capabilities.
So what do we need to do? We need to give a thumbs up to this design work?
I am asking a thumbs up to do the design and to come back to you with what the project would look like.
Commissioner Mejia.
For that, I'm, it's not that I'm, like, I know that we need to, I know we need to do it, right? But I would like to know how much the design is going to cost and where that mo- funding is going to come from, the different avenues that we have possible. Is it, maybe with the design, is it path that juvenile court can absorb it, or maybe not at all? Do we have any other, like, source that we can possibly pay for this? I, I'm okay with moving forward, I just need to know, like, get those questions answered on where the funding is gonna come from and how much it is that we're actually paying for it.
All right, we can do that.
Can I ask for more information about those external agencies and contracts? Because my willingness to make a big investment is gonna change. And based on, you know, maybe we only need fifteen doors that work if we're only using it for our residents. But maybe we need seventy-five doors to work if we're gonna be using it for three counties.
So, well, did they ever respond?
Yes, so Grace Harbor has responded, um, to set up a meeting, and so that, I don't remember the date exactly, so there's going to be an initial meeting that's going to take place. I really think, though, that the board needs to have a discussion with our, with the Board of Judges and lay out clear what is, like, where we're at, right, and this potential investment, because they're the ones who have been kind of drawing the line in the sand in terms of moving forward. And so I think there needs to be an honest discussion between the Board of County Commissioners and Superior Court, and letting them know, like, if we're going to be making this investment, right, like.
We have to be able to.
We have to.
I mean, Commissioner Schaller, uh, Judge Schaller, sorry, sent a letter that we could recirculate, I mean, just as a starting point for the new commissioners who have, maybe haven't seen that. A, a lengthy letter, the last time we talked about this, saying why the, the judges disagreed strongly with this concept. Um, and then we could ask questions based on that.
Uh, yeah, I feel like, I agree, like, if we're being asked to do this very big investment on, you know, this facility, I, especially with what are, where we're at. I, I'm kind of just very wary, and if we're not gonna move forward that way, then, yeah, I'm, I would definitely want the scope of that design to go way down, um, to only.
And so that would be with Judge Skinder and sounded, um, the family court these days.
I think it's Judge Schaller.
It's still Judge Schaller.
Yeah, I, the transition isn't going to happen until June, July.
All right, so I will reach out, try to schedule a meeting with Judge Skinder and Schaller to meet with the board. Um, at the same time as we're, um, moving forward with the date to have this other meeting with the Grace Harbor folks. And we will get back to you next Monday with information about what a design might cost and some options where we could pay for.
Okay.
All right.
Sounds like that's where we're at for today. Commissioner Edwards, is that okay with you?
Uh, that's, uh, great. I'm kinda right there with Commissioner Klaus. The amount of money that we're talking about spending right now is gonna be like nothing if we get embroiled in serious litigation, because things go bad.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Next up is reports on external boards and commissions. Uh, anybody wanna, anybody have a report that they need to present? I know I have something, but I have to look at, yeah, just look back and see what it is.
What have I been up to?
Oh, I know, I was gonna talk about the, I was gonna talk about the Timber Counties Caucus meeting. And this is very interesting, since we talked about shooting zones today. So, um, completely unrelated to the effort that I was discussing with the folks at Black Lake and shooting ducks and sneaking on property and shooting near jet skiers and all that. Fisher, fishermen and whatnot. Um, I have met with multiple recreation groups in Capital State Forest who were concerned about, um, unauthorized shooting, um, in Capital State Forest. And there's mountain biking groups, and there's trail running groups, and there's all sorts of other folks that use the thing. And there's places where you are allowed to shoot and places where you're not allowed to shoot. This is on state land, so this isn't really our thing, but, um, but they were getting the runaround from DNR at the time, and they wanted to see if I could facilitate a contact with them. Um, because they had an idea of like, if there was a place that, if they, they proposed a gate that they would fund and that they would administer, and they would, like, provide access. They wanted to work with DNR to see if they could sort of mutually agree on a, a gating place that would basically protect a lot of areas where there wasn't supposed to be shooting anyway. But if people couldn't just easily drive there, it would deter that, but you could still run there and bike there and stuff. So there was an idea they had, I didn't know if it was good or bad, but I tried to work with some staff at DNR to, to get them into contact to have that conversation. Anyway, so that was my background to this issue. And what was interesting at the Timber Counties Caucus, let me pull up my notes, was that, um, um, there's a new, there's new led, uh, funding. Pull this up, you can give me one second. Shooting zone money. Uh, let's see what I write. Well, anyway, there's, there's money out there, apparently we're not the only place that's had this problem. And there's some money that was authorized through the state budget for DNR to set up, like, actual specific places in, on state forest land area. Capital State Forest was not one of them, it was a couple of other counties that got this. But they set up specific, like, funded these shooting areas so they could be managed, and this is the place you can do that, and then nobody's all worried about stray bullets as they buck mountain bike with their kids or it's whatever. So I raised my hand to the people that were there, there were DNR officials there, and I basically said that I had been working through the same set of issues with, um, with our residents in our local state forest lands. And could we work, could we talk with them about maybe getting on the list to be the next place that they, if this works out good, the, the two things they just got funded, could we work with them on a similar thing here? So anyway, that was interesting, because it was kind of a potential solution to something that I worked on a couple of years ago and didn't, wasn't sure there would ever be a solution. That's just a report. Um, go ahead, Commissioner, oh, anyone else? That's about all I had to report to you guys on.
Attended the Tenino Chamber meeting, uh, the evening meeting last week. Uh, there was a speaker that they had, one of their business coaches came down and kinda just gave some, it was more like life coaching type speechy, speaking, it was interesting. Uh, attended a Flood Authority meeting and the WASAC Broadband Advisory Committee meeting. Uh, Flood Authority meeting, uh, they talked about a lot of project in Gray's Harbor. Uh, WASAC Broadband Advisory Committee meeting. Um, there was a lot of talk about, uh, broadband bead, B E A D, this, uh,
Yep.
Yeah. The bead grant, there was a lot of talk about the bead grant, the, the pros and cons, the good, the bad. Uh, and then, uh, I really enjoyed my Friday because I got to go on a tour of the Grand Mound Wastewater Treatment Plant, which I love going and touring those places for whatever reason, and, uh, and I, I really, I learned.
Suction system is pretty awesome.
Well, yeah, that's, yeah, the suction system I was fascinated by, because I'm used to, uh, pressurize systems or, or, uh, uh, gravity systems, and they, they told me that it was, it was vacuum
Yep.
uh, controlled, and I, my mind blew, I, what?
It's really weird.
Yeah, and I had all kinds of questions about that, and, uh, it sounds like it's actually working fairly well, which is also shocking to me, and they're saying that when there's a, a vacuum leak out in the field, that they can hear it like a jet engine in somebody's yard. They're like, they say they just go driving around with the windows down and wait until they can hear just a massive sucking sound somewhere. Uh, so that was cool, and I, I, it, it's a good system out there. I had a lot of questions about capacity and, and future plans that they're gonna, they're gonna bring forward. Uh, they're gonna share with me, but I, I know that that's at, at an upcoming meeting, uh, because that's kind of a big, uh, component of what's going on in Grand Mound, is what all can that infrastructure handle? We also looked at the water system side of things, we went up to the water towers. Uh, we talked about the, the, the wells and, and visited the wells. And the staff, they were excellent, they did a great job on the tour, and if you haven't done it, it's a good one to do, if you're interested in that kind of thing. And, uh, yeah.
So we're getting Jenica into a work session uh, to talk about what we've done with broadband so far, and the bead is one of the challenges.
Okay.
Any other reports on external boards from, yeah?
Yeah, I attended the Maritime Washington National Heritage Area Expo Session. Um, and this is a state agency, and they were, uh, just talking about some uh, grants that are, again, becoming available for maritime heritage, and so that was really informational. Attended intercity transit, they, uh, celebrated the, um, it's Employee Appreciation Month over at IT. So they did, uh, different, uh, just videos on basically how, especially with the, uh, bus operators, several close calls, and how they just really have to be, um, defensive, have to do defensive driving all the time, uh, so it was pretty inspirational. Also had, uh, a presentation on IT's E E O P. Um, and so it was great to see, uh, an agency that has it completed, and hopefully the county is there soon.
I just authorized that this morning. Uh, so it is completed and turned into the Fed, and we have some more work to do um, to meet the requirements, but the initial plan is in.
Yeah. Um, attended the, uh, March Presidential Primary Camisine Board Meeting and, uh, approved of that election. Uh, and that was on the cap of Commissioner Mensah, so that one was pretty straight through. Um, had a meeting with Pressure Gadman, just about kind of in preparation to the meeting that we're going to be holding with the Boston Harbor Association. Um, had a meeting, uh, with the Nisqually Tribe. Um, and, uh, talked to them about two things. Uh, one was, uh, the possibility of a tribal museum or heritage center. Um, and then the second was in regards to the MOU, um, that, uh, in terms of the permitting. And so, uh, they said that they will be submitting a letter, uh, to the commission, so we should be expecting that and this coming week, and kind of explaining their perspective on, um, kind of on, on that whole issue, so, um, I'm very interested to receive that. Um, and then had a meeting in regards to One Water. Um, and that is my Commissioner item, so whenever we're ready for that.
I guess, uh, you reminded me of a couple of things. Robin and I met with Rick Walk this morning about the Quixote proposal on Carpenter Road, letting Lacy know kind of formally. He has also met with Representative Doleo, who's on the board of Quixote, and had brought this fir- at first to my attention. So it wasn't any big surprise, but his only expressed concern was just the fact that that location is so well-located, that, you know, he would hope that we could do a more, a higher-density type of a project on that land, because it's got so much connection to transit and services. But he acknowledged that Quixote is a great model, and he would be addressing that with the council members and letting us know if there's any concerns from Lacy's perspective, other than that, uh, with that site, so that went pretty easily. He also wanted to discuss Jazzcom, um, so we got a little bit into that, but.
What do you have to say about that?
Um, you know, Lacy's the administrator, like, they're the backbone of Jazzcom. I got this, my feeling was that he was being somewhat, you know, trying to support, trying to be supportive of the director and Jazzcom in terms of the concerns that he'd heard that the commissioners had, so we were kind of, we were kind of back, bouncing back and forth, what we've been talking about in terms of, so he hears the right stuff, and he was trying to give his perspective, you know. I told him, you know, you, you guys don't have some of the problems we have, because you don't have horses and cows running around in Lacy. Um, where that's half, shockingly, that's like over half the calls that come from Thurston County are related to wa- livestock. I still can't believe that, but that's what the stats showed from Jazzcom. Um, so, uh, you know, it's a different situation that they have and that we have in terms of their satisfaction with the services they're getting.
He suggested that, um, the county invite the Chair and Vice Chair of the Jazzcom Governing Board, uh, to join Sarah when she comes in.
He didn't really know why we were meeting, and then Robin was like, well, the court, Sarah thinks like quarterly to deal with the specific set of problems. So we were talking about whether that should be a separate meeting, where we, whether, like, if we wanted to entertain that, should they just come along with Sarah at one of our quarterlies, or do, or should we do, is that a separate conversation in some regard?
And they are, of course, welcome, because these are open meetings, but then we are specifically addressing the concerns that we've had for many years regarding services in the unincorporated area.
Who is the, are you on the board? Who is the vice, is it Lisa partially?
Partially is the Chair, I think, or Vice Chair.
Lisa's the Chair.
Okay, who's the Vice Chair, do you know?
No, not off the top of my head.
It's not you, though.
We haven't even, we, the last one got canceled, so I don't even know if I've had an official meeting with Jazzcom yet. They keep getting moved or canceled, so.
Is the, what's the purpose, to, like, add political pressure to our, you know, oh, these are your friends, you can't, you know?
I, I don't know, he didn't really say.
So he, he didn't, but they wanna be there to support Sarah, and uh, you know, it may not be a bad idea for the whole board to understand the concerns of the county.
Yeah? I would hope that they do all, I would hope they do already. You'd think that that would be conveyed to the board.
If they're canceling meetings, then Commissioner Klaus has no opportunity to say, hey, we got, we got concerns.
Yeah.
Another thing, though, that I know that, uh, Jazzcom's working on is they need new facility. And before they can go very far with determining a new facility, they need to know whether Thurston County is in or out.
Yeah.
So if, if we're continuing to talk about pulling money out, or, you know, not, completely pulling out, um, then they.
I know how we can use those extra sixteen thousand square feet if the the dogs upstairs. Cows.
Yeah, and, yeah, I was gonna say, we could put in some, uh, stalls for.
Those cows.
Yeah, no.
Commissioner Edwards, do you have any reports for us from your external committees?
Uh, no, I have a concern under Commissioner Items, uh, when that comes up.
Who was there? Anybody else? Yeah, Commissioner Klaus.
Just, the only thing that I have from external boards is last week we had the RHC Executive Meeting and discussed the agenda for our next official meeting, and we'll be, um, officially electing the Chair at that next meeting. We postponed it until after legislative session, because one of our members is busy during legislative session.
And then, if I remember correctly, you have to be Vice Chair as the County Rep, right?
Or Chair.
Or Chair.
Yeah, but right now I'm Vice Chair.
Okay.
We were able to move forward on mine earlier in the year, but now we're electing the Chair, so.
So there's no Chair now?
Well, right now Carolyn is the Chair, um, but she held on to that for a couple extra meetings, because one of our reps from Tom Water is busy during legislative session. Yeah, so now that he's freed up a little bit, we're gonna do the election of Chair.
He might be the Chair then.
Possibly, yeah. That's all I had for external boards.
Okay, sounds like we can then go to Item Three, Commissioner Items, and Commissioner Mejia, you were first, and I'll go to Commissioner Edwards.
Okay, so, prompted, very nice. Uh, so, um, and it's One Water. Um, so, this was an item that was on our list, and so, um, I guess just.
And so I guess just as a way to move forward, I was going to make a recommendation to the board to have a subcommittee from the board have two, two of us participate as well as the assistant county manager, Rob, and three technical staff from CPED, Environmental Health and Public Works. So we can really talk seriously about defining the why and creating the policy of like One Water and what that means to everyone. I think when we ask what One Water means, it kind of means a little bit something different to everyone. And so kind of just syncing it down. And I think a subcommittee would be a kind of the most appropriate way to follow that. So just bring that forward. That of course would be kind of the first step then. As we're defining the why, right, we get that stakeholder in fine and then refine the why that I like with. And then possibly holding a One Water summit. And then from that, you know, moving into that garnering that stakeholder commitment and move through to jurisdictional comprehensive plan updates and later into capital facilities plans. But I think the first step is is really creating a board subcommittee to kind of, you know, with those, with the technical staff to to really kind of create what that vision is in terms of One Water, One Water. So just kind of I'll open it up for discussion and Rob, if there's anything you would like to add.
I, I think that while I just forwarded Robin a copy of this from my second scratch. I invited myself to a meeting on Friday. Commissioner Mihia was hosting last minute and that was around the the concept of One Water. Everybody uses it differently. And I think sometimes there's been a lot of folks who are, some individuals are approaching it more from a structural standpoint as opposed to taking a pause and really talking about what does it mean from a policy standpoint? And then have the form follow that, that function or what you're trying to achieve. So trying to make it not too, what else? But having the internal work, kind of crafting that and then testing it with stakeholders because there are a lot of stakeholders in the process of community.
So with the, go ahead.
No, it just ultimately will drive a lot of comprehensive planning policies, capital facilities planning potentially. There's, there's far reaching implications for it.
So the task of the subcommittee would be to work with technical staff on a initial, what the initial proposal might look like.
Yes.
Not necessarily to take stakeholder input.
No.
That would be a future.
Take that product and go out to stakeholders.
Yeah.
But rather to come back to the full board.
Yeah.
Because I'm, so what's going through my head is the guidance that we got regarding the OPMA and subcommittees. Once you start to take input, then it becomes open public meeting.
I thought only if they had like decision making authority.
No, once you, once you start taking stakeholder input, if, if the subcommittee was gonna narrow down options rather than the whole board seeing all the options, there were a number of paths into OPMA.
Yeah, so I think the, the role of the subcommittee will be defining the why and then and creating that. And I think, you know, then comes right in front of the board so the board can.
That flow could be much more specific in terms of the, the coming back to the board.
Is there like a particular jurisdiction that we've heard of that does this really comprehensively or that has gone the furthest with this concept? I know Pierce County is a lot more down this road than we are, but I don't know that they're like the, you know, the perfect pinnacle. I think they just, they've, they've integrated it within a few different departments better than we have. And they have like somebody that's in charge of the, I mean, I, I know the guy that's kind of involved there and I could bring him to the subcommittee to kind of explain what Pierce County does. So we could all learn from it, but I was just curious if there's somebody we're kind of looking at is like, oh, this is the, this is the progressive jurisdiction on this issue.
I think everybody's taken a different perspective of finding what meaning, what's meaningful for them at the time that they create it, right? So yeah, I think it's, would be tough to create one. If you ask me, I would go really.
Really, yeah, because, because I almost see three tracks to it and I'm just thinking out loud here. The, even within each of these tracks, there's a lot of like siloing and dispersal. But, but then there, but then taking those three tracks and putting them even to one bigger, you know, like it's almost like, you know, there's like clusters of galaxies and superclusters and stuff. It's like, there's the track of water. I've definitely heard it discussed like in the, I'll call it the water supply area. You go to a wastewater treatment commons, they're talking about One Water, you know. The sewer should not be siloed. There's reclaimed water. There's water supply. There's permit exempt. Well, there's all this stuff related to the supply of water, having enough water.
And water purveyors.
Then there's water quality and that's all the salmon recovery and the pollutants and all this stuff. And that's all siloed into different stuff. And then there's the like, the building department and the permits and how that's all, how, how water is handled in the course of a, of your development vision and development goals. And of course that touches the other areas, but it's its own thing where we were trying to like, making sure, you know, an applicant doesn't need to have a different, get the different vision from the septic that's over in environmental health versus the stormwater that's over in public health versus the water, water quantity expert hydrologist that's in CPED. I mean, just, just within the building world, you could bring One Water together and make it more seamless. And I think we've tried to do that a little bit in Thurston County, that part.
Yeah, and that gets back to the comment around it being structural in a nature, sort of how to be organized. That's one part of it, sort of the operational side of it. But needing to go back to the beginning and say, well, what are we trying to achieve?
Interesting stuff.
Yeah.
So to form a subcommittee, what is the process?
So right now we don't have a process. I still need to wrap up the operating guidelines.
Typically, you make a motion in a meeting, right?
Well, that's what I was about to say. You could just write here. If three or more agree that a subcommittee is in order, then you choose who would be on it and who would staff it and away you go. And the scope of the subcommittee, which is to, for this, would be to explore options going forward for One Water. To bring that back to the board.
So I guess my first question is, is there another commis, I will just say I'm interested since I brought this forward, but is there another commissioner?
I'm interested in wastewater. I don't, I don't know why.
But I mean, I know that, you know, Commissioner Mensah is, is very involved with water and ecology and things like that. So, I mean, I'm not saying my interest wanes outside of bio solids, but that's, solving that problem is just fascinating to me. Commissioner Edwards?
I almost feel that we do need a definite definition of what we would be striving for on the One Water concept before we even put together. And I'm not against the subcommittee at all, but if we don't have a definition everybody agrees on, then what do we end up with?
Kind of a scope of the subcommittee.
Well, that might be the technical, that might be part of the discussion of the subcommittee is trying to bring an appropriate scope forward to the board. Hearing kind of what from, you know, Commissioner Mihia just mentioned this to me earlier today. I was like, you know, I'd like to bring Art Starry back ex officio into this, you know, just because he, he and I talked about this from the time I joined the board. And he, he knows all the prior efforts of thirty seven years here of Thurston County. And he's worked with experts in the whole region. And he, and he probably would be able to tell us right off the bat who's doing what where, if he's willing to kind of come in on it once or twice to help us. But anyway, but just because I think that, you know, there's different, as Rob said, there's different ways to go. It's not just one thing. It's different, it's, there's different conceptions of it. So I don't know that we want to predetermine that or we let the subcommittee chew on that more.
I agree with you. I think the subcommittee should actually chew, chew on that. That's like the whole point of kind of, and then the board can, can decide and be a little bit more concise. But I feel like if this is left up just to all of us, we'll just be going around in circles instead of actually.
A technical advisory committee.
So the, it seems like the, I do think it's important to divine, define what the scope of the subcommittee work would be, not to define what One Water would be. I, I mean, that seems like the scope of the work of the subcommittee.
Unless we define that, like you could set up like a subcommittee for a specific purpose and time or you could set it up in perpetuity. And if that, that might be what she's looking for, but we could set one up just to do the preliminary advisement and come back and say, this is what we define what One Water is. This is what we'd like the scope to be. And then the board would have another decision making point.
Exactly.
I think what, and I'm just, I'm hearing about this today, so this, I'm just thinking out loud. I think that you could have the subcommittee do two phases. One phase is to discuss all the different models, you know, and what could be included and kind of maybe bring, let's, I'm just gonna say three because that's, you know, a nice number. Bring like three different like scoped models to the board and then the board could choose which way it wants to go. Then they could take that direction and go back and then, and then based on the specific choice that the board made, develop the resolution that would then lay out the details of where we would be going with that.
And then appoint members to the board maybe later at a point because maybe you want to change things up. Maybe there was one person that was not the best helper.
Yeah, for sure. But anyway, guess what happened?
What's phase two?
Well, phase two would be to take that choice. And, you know, after hearing the subcommittee report on the why, why, why would you do it this way? Who's doing it that way? You know, what would be this, how many different, you know, elements would be involved? Here's this one, here's this one. Board kind of gives direction and then they would go take that, that scope basically. Like they would give choices for scope, board would select scope, then they would take that scope and, and do, and kind of lay out a plan for next steps or an implementation approach or, or, you know, Commissioner Mihia was talking about a resolution that would do X, Y, or Z. I don't know exactly.
I, I like what you're saying. Just pulling up wastewater digest. The definition of One Water itself varies depending on the needs of the community in question. For some communities, One Water may mean investing in urban water management. For another community, One Water entails integrating watershed protection and source water protection. Regardless of the approach and community needs, the core remains the same, all what, so it's saying it can be different for everybody. And so setting a group to define what we're needing may make sense.
I think that's, we need to define like what it is for Thurston County. But again, I just, I feel like a subcommittee would be the best suited with those three connections of the three departments, right, that are working in quality, quantity and.
Like, like a work group.
Quality, quantity and.
Flow, yeah.
The, yeah, because it's like, the way I, maybe the best way to think about this is like, if water is really involved in like fifteen different areas that are kind of siloed, you know, any two of them or three of them or five of them you put together is in a limited sense, One Water. It's One Water within those five, let's just say you put five groups together out of the fifteen places that water touches something. Well, any, within those five, you're talking about One Water. But it doesn't mean you're doing all fifteen at once. That's like impossible or whatever. So I mean, it's a question of what's the logical grouping of the different ways water comes in that could be handled in a, in a, in a better way for planning purposes for all that. I think that's the way to kind of think about why it seems like it's kind of a squirrely topic.
So it seems like we, one, one path forward may be, and I'm, I'm not focused on the One Water stuff. I'm focused on how do you vet and launch a subcommittee? One path might be that we do a charter that the board authorizes and, and away you go.
Charter?
Yeah. Charter for the subcommittee. We, we do that for quite a few of our groups, across county groups.
But are we saying before that we want to do like a study group or a work group that could help develop the scope?
No, this, this, it, I think that Commissioner Mensah laid out a really nice scope here. Identify a set of models, a, a definition of One Water and a set of models to bring to the board for further consideration. I mean, it doesn't have to be long and fancy. It's just that it identifies the work of the subcommittee, the subcommittee members and the staff support for the subcommittee. So that staff have a clear understanding that they're to be working with, directly with commissioners on a desk. And their directors know what they're doing. Does that, I mean, does that, and I would certainly run it past you to, to see if it fits what we've been talking about here, but.
Okay, so we don't need to do a motion then, like?
No, I would, I would bring this charter for you to move. That way we, it's documented. Everyone knows what you've agreed to, something that staff can look at. It's just a path forward on how to make it happen.
Okay.
Okay, so the board will next see a proposed short, brief subcommittee charter.
Doesn't need to be called a charter, just a.
You keep calling it charter. You're the one that said charter. I didn't say charter.
And Wayne, they talked about charter.
All right, well, that's interesting. Other commissioner items? Oh, I, I want to get Commissioner Edwards because you mentioned that and I'll go to Wayne after that.
Are we ready?
Yeah, you're up.
Well, maybe we'll have time in our planning sessions to talk more about water. I'm just gonna mention something to you. I've talked with some of our employees that are pretty interested in things, all things around reclassification and maybe the implication or imposing or the, the class and comp study if we might utilize it or not. And I think that's coming up tomorrow, I think.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yep.
Okay, but the concern from staff was that this is a, is basically a closed meeting. I mean, they could come to the meeting and sit in, but I don't think it's televised. And so I'm wondering if it, if it doesn't give that appearance of we're kind of working behind closed doors on a very hot topic. For those of you that were here during the latter part of the budget session last winter, last fall in twenty-three. It, it got pretty heated up about we didn't care. And I just wonder if that wouldn't be a better discussion at one of our regular meetings that were televised so that we don't get accused of something that we're not doing, which I don't feel we're trying to do anything, you know, in closed doors or anything. But that's the way it looks when we streamline everything else, but we don't streamline that very important discussion that they're worried about. So if we did take that off at some point, we could talk more about water in that vacancy. So I just bring that up. That'd be one, I, I do have a couple of other things, but I don't know what my seatmates might think about that. Any, anybody else have any concerns or employees get ahold of them about? I think it's tomorrow's meeting that is, is not live streamed, right? I think it's tomorrow's meeting that is, is not live streamed, right?
Proposal would be to remove that agenda item from the planning session and move it to a regular work session.
You know, considering the, uh, amount of, um. Of concern that, uh, both the county managers and HR have received. Uh, both from commissioners, directors, elected officials, as well as staff. On the fact that, uh, uh, reclassifications have not been going forward. Um, we really think, in my opinion, that you do need to, we created time. Uh, a substantial amount of time for you to have this conversation tomorrow. So I would ask that you do not remove it from tomorrow's agenda.
Okay, I guess then my follow-up to that, to counter that we're working behind closed doors. Uh, staff can't take time off to come sit in on our meetings. I don't know if the union reps will be coming, I don't know that.
So, union reps will be able to attend?
Anyone.
Yeah, they, they would.
They're absolutely welcome to come and sit in the room if they so choose. Um, they would have to take time, if their day to do so, they would anyway to. If they're watching this instead of doing their regular work, um. I would also say that because, uh, some of what you're going to discuss tomorrow is related to bargaining. Um, we could easily set this up in a closed session. And we have not done so.
Oh, on the.
On the reclass.
Reclass and stuff?
On the comp and class study, because it is all related.
Boy, I, I'm gonna opt for open government myself, I don't know where my si- seatmates are on that, but.
I did too.
I remember, I remember what went on.
Scheduled in a, a closed meeting.
Well, even if, even if we decided to go for a closed meeting, I'm probably gonna wanna opt myself, just. Uh, I like doing things out in the open whenever I get a chance, and because it was so contentious. The latter part of our, uh, budget cycle last fall. I just do not have that happen again, that's all, that's kind of where I'm, that's the only reason I bring this up, it's been brought to my attention, and so. Now what's the best way to address it? And then I've got some other things to bring up, should I just keep going?
Um, not quite, I just want to close the door on this item, I mean, your suggestion is either gonna. Get accepted or not, I mean, what, where does the board want to do? Keep it on the, keep it on the planning session, discussion, or move it?
I would like to have the suspicion the sooner the better, so.
It's, it's, it's all new to me, so I don't have the background to make it any argument one way or the other. Yeah, yeah, that's, I mean, this is, you're talking about discussions that you had on, you know, budget stuff before I was a part of the board, so. You know, I bring the information, and I look forward to the discussion tomorrow, or if you move it, I'll look forward to the discussion when you move it.
To the, the planning session time is really meant to be a little bit less structured. The ability for, for staff, if it's HR or someone to come in and really, so you can new on, you know, can noodle on it. And really kind of dig in and then do the what ifs, and so it might be a little bit messy, and it may not be ultimately what happens, but it provides that. That time to do that, uh, work, which otherwise doesn't happen.
Okay, so I, I think I'm seeing consensus to keep it on tomorrow, it's, or at least not complete consensus, but. Majority of the board would like to keep the discussion on, okay, Commissioner Edwards, I'm gonna go, circle back to you, Commissioner Forni.
Okay.
You got the next.
I know we talked about it briefly a couple weeks ago, or maybe a couple months ago. Uh, it was, and it was brought up in public comment a couple meetings ago. Uh, but there's that resolution that outlines the authority and kind of the. Uh, relationship to and with the county manager and the commissioners. I don't remember, you know, and there was a public comment member, somebody in the public made some comments saying it's illegal for us to. Have interaction, I just would like to review that again before the county manager starts, so we can all just. Maybe read it again and be on the same page, and if there's any questions or anything that we want to change, could we maybe, probably ten minutes?
Uh, we could certainly add that to your morning.
Have you seen it before? We brought it up two months ago, and we briefly discussed it, but then it wa- I don't think we've revisited it again.
We haven't, and I reference it in the operating guidelines, which I, I've got to complete, um. The, I'm just sitting here thinking. Seven more days. And your time is fully booked in these last few days. I started to say, oh, we can add that to Commissioner Items tomorrow, but the, um. Review of the agenda for the following week will take up most of the planning or the agenda setting.
I'm wondering, like.
Agenda, there may be time during the planning session.
Maybe review it before he starts and then review it after he starts, yeah.
Yeah, so if you have concerns, nothing in it is illegal. Nothing that you do is illegal, the public comment that you received is erroneous.
Absolutely.
Um, and, um. It does ask that you work through the county manager, um, to make staff assignments, so we can manage work.
Yep.
So.
Yeah, I mean, we, just to be clear, cuz that one thing that was erroneous, and I went through this line very carefully, is that. You know, you can call a staff member at any point to get a piece of information. If you want to start assigning them to do projects of a substantial nature, then that should be brought to the county manager, not so he can say yes or no, but whether he. He kind of decides whether it comes to the board.
Yeah.
Because you're basically, you're spending like county resources unilaterally, that's not really appropriate.
And, and that's pretty standard.
Yeah, that's standard, and we looked, we mollyed it on something that other councils have, like RAC City Council and stuff, so. It's just embedded, and that was a change, cuz we didn't really have, it was just a kind of a free-for-all before that. And it's, and I've been really, you know, and it just, I always think, think it through, like, it's not that big a deal, I think it's appropriate, so I, you know. Like I say, I mean, I'm happy to discuss it, I don't know.
I, I don't think there's any issues, I just thought maybe it's a good time to review it before he starts, and then, uh, and then we're, you know, if there's any questions, and. We can just, I don't have any.
I can have copies handy, and if we have any time, the, the time that we can squeeze it in is, um. Tomorrow afternoon, Wednesday morning, or Wednesday afternoon. And we've fully booked those time slots, so I'll have it ready to go if we've got a little time.
And then the other i- item, uh, and this is not. And like, this is maybe, you know, further out, is, uh, just a, a discussion with CPED, CPED maybe about. An admin permitting processes and looking for ways to simplify the permitting processes.
They're working on that.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I mean, timing, as they say, is everything, right? We're in the process really with the conversion from ASIX, which is the current platform that all of the. Permits are done to Acela, which we should be going live, fingers crossed, uh, June first, and, um. June first or July first, one of those two, it's a J, and it's not January. Um, but looking at those, uh, moving, making that transition, being able, and a lot of work has gone into the. The work process flow, when, so they didn't want to just go to a new system and kind of carry over all work processes, you look at that. You define what those are as you go into the new process, and it will allow folks to do things electronically. So they don't necessarily have to come to the BDC to be able to submit, uh, applications, so there's a lot of streamlining. That will be part of that implementation.
There's all of that, and then there's the preparation for the law that takes effect regarding length of time that we can have.
Correct, and so the, just how far, um, how many back and forths do you have, right? We have two bite at the apples, so to speak, um, right now, that you've been trying to work with folks and get them to, uh, an administrative approval. Um, but if that's not doable, given, uh, code or other constraints, then, uh, making sure that that timeline is fairly well locked.
Commissioner Edwards, I'm sorry, did you have something on the last item, I saw your hand go up.
I, yes, I had a follow-up on that, maybe I could, uh, we're getting, talking about the administrative, uh, on the, the CPED. Just, just a follow-up to that, and that is that, uh. We've still not come to a solution, I don't think, on, uh. Old notice of violations that ended up on the books, uh. A long time back, and personnel has all changed, many years have gone by. New owners have purchased the property, they had no idea that there was something out of whack, and then they go to. Do something, and, uh, then they find out that, well, two owners ago. There was this particular violation, whatever it was, so. Is there any more information on that, uh, to be had at this point?
I, I've had. Last summer or so, if I recall correctly, I mean, the board had already previously provided direction to CPED staff to not conflate. A potential compliance thing with a new permit, but that doesn't mean that there, it can, a new permit might not, in fact. Have to deal with the past, because whatever it's proposing to do will need to be brought up to, to code, so it's. As much as possible trying to bifurcate the two, um, that direction was provided to staff, but it, it's probably not. Uh, mutually, um, exclusive.
I would also say that if you were looking for, um. Can we just say once the property was sold, that the, uh, violation be quashed, if you will? Or, you know, the, all of a sudden, the thing that was built out of compliance would just. Be considered in compliance because the property was sold, we already came back with a. Legal, I thought, that said, no, you can't do that.
Correct, Travis came in last year.
If it's a septic for two bedrooms and they've built out four bedrooms, it can't magically be congruent.
We can't just say, oh, well, it was a long time ago.
Okay, I, I don't know if we've really got that in official, uh. I guess where it was really a official legal opinion or. I, I remember, I remember that being talked about, but I just didn't think it ever came about to a conclusion. On exactly how, how to tell folks, well, yeah, you okay, you bought something with a problem, and now you've gotta spend. You know, twenty-two thousand dollars or whatever it is to get it fixed, and who's kind of. I, I don't know if I truly accept the fact that we can't at some point say. Well, we don't even know how long this has been hanging fire, for an example, before it was discovered, which was, it was discovered years ago. How many years before that, at some point, I think we have to have some kind of a. A moratorium that takes effect that, okay, if it's been hanging fire three years or something, then. We, we gotta do something different, that's not fair to our constituents that we're working with.
So Commissioner.
I just wonder.
I'm sure you will recall the part of the conversation was that any buyer of property. Should be doing their due diligence and checking if there were permit violations, those are all open public records. Um, that one should think about when purchasing property.
I, I do have to say, though, I don't think there's one, e- it's kind of like, uh, tax title property, yes, it's there. But does the public really know it's there? We have to remember we're working for the public, not working against the public. So I'm just trying to come up with, with a solution to a problem, it's not a, I don't know how many of these instances are out there, but. I'm sure there's quite a few.
Right.
And, uh, I've been, I've had several brought to my attention, so. I still think we need to do something, what that is, not really sure.
We.
I do have, I have another, uh, one other issue.
That would satisfy your constituent.
Go ahead with your next issue, Commissioner Edwards.
Uh, the next one I'm wondering about is, uh, affordable housing, it falls under that category, I guess. And kind of under the whole ADU concept. Are we gonna really try to do something about affordable housing? And allow people a little leeway for what we used to call the mother-in-law house, that's kind of changed. Now it has to do with how many acres you have, uh, if you're in the urban growth area, or maybe not. You want to live in the family home, but. They're not allowed to add on because the ADU doesn't comply. Are we trying to do anything for affordable housing in that regard?
I thought that we were working on a ADU concepts where we'd have model.
Pre-approved plans.
Approved model plans, or.
CPED's looking into that.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So some changes have been, uh, made for the UGAs, if I recall, um, not that long ago. But, right, so one of the concepts is to, uh, have certain pre-approved. Plans which can help streamline the process and or lower cost for someone that might be creating one. Does not eliminate the need to do some type of site planning activity. Uh, but the challenge will be is kind of figuring out what that looks like, and then, um, having to fund it. Cuz generally what most other jurisdictions have done is that they go out for an RFP for X number, you know. For architects or folks who actually do the plans in those drawings, but they don't do them gratis, uh, so we have to figure out. Is there a budget, how much would that look like, and then the process to have that unfold.
Is there anything about that that should be on the docket, that, that wasn't on it today?
I mean, that, that's a possibility, I, I just think we often talk about affordable housing and. What we're trying to do, kind of like we do about childcare, and I know we're working on it, but. That one down in Rochester took almost three years to get that process going, and. I guess I'm always impatient trying to come up with a short circuit to the bureaucratic system, but I really do think. We have an opportunity to do something about affordable housing in it. It's gonna take a little action on our part, just wondering where we might be at on that.
And not the rural.
Well, there's an opportunity, I mean, it's, uh, it's, I'd have to go back and look at the, you know, any of the legislation that may have. Actually passed, there were a lot of conversations around it, but.
Yes.
Off the top of my head, I don't recall what passed, but there are, as we go forward for, uh, the, you know, Thurston twenty forty-five. Our comp plan will look at what are the goals and policies that the board and the community would like to incorporate into that planning? And what are the subsequent impacts or changes that would be required in zoning, um, to have allowed uses, et cetera, so, um. Yeah, it's just.
Sounds like.
Sounds like more, more to come, huh?
Well, definitely more to come, it's, it's not one and done, it's iterative, for sure.
When we did, we did our, um. Changes to ADU policy and in the rural area, we took the changes as far as we were advised Growth Management Act would allow. And, um, it wasn't, it was pretty restrictive, frankly, but that's what we were told was required, for the same reasons I brought up this morning about. About density and those policies, so. UGA might be more flexibility, you know, and I think the plans issue is another thing that we could bring, we could weave into it. You know, you could have it.
Okay.
You could make it easier for people to do, e- even where they're allowed to do it, but you can't go too far in the rural area, allowing it beyond density.
Okay, sounds good, just, good discussion, thank you.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Forni, I got to you.
I was, the, the, the permitting processes, I was just wondering if there's a way that we could have a discussion with them about. Uh, are there types of, is there authority, are there administrative? processes that maybe we hold at too high a level and things like that? That, you know, like, I, those, I mean, I wanna ask those questions, like, what, you know, like, I, I've, I've heard from different sources that, you know, some of the decision-making isn't, uh, I, I guess, pushed down at the levels that it should be, and that's maybe one of the issues. I, again, I don't know how these things work, but, I, you know, I, it might be a good discussion or a good question of Josh and his staff.
Yeah, whether that's a briefing or we can find, uh, specific time to prove you to meet with, with staff, I know that.
I'd wanna do it as a board, I think.
We'll, we'll put them on a work session.
Okay.
I had a meeting with the, were you at the one I had with the biologist, Heather?
Yes.
So that, that meeting, that meeting was really instructive to me, and it seems to kinda probably go to what you're asking about. Uh, like, just, you know, that might be good information for the board.
There's any number, if, if you look at some of the data that we had during the fee study report of looking at sort of, there is, I can't remember how many, maybe around twenty eighteen timeframe. There were several permits that were at that point in time that used to be permitted, but the board said in terms of streamlining, no longer are we doing permits for siding or windows or, or whatever the, the case may be.
It was up to four hundred and your.
It, it allowed some of those efficiencies to take place, right? But ultimately, we still have to apply equitably the, the code that's in place and, uh, and I, I think that you're right, a future subsequent, um, docketing process, I don't know if it's really there now, but is to dedicate the time and resources of staff to sort of, where are the barriers? How to look at code, because sometimes when it's, as much as folks try to avoid it, you could have conflicts in code, and that's, try to avoid it.
I know one of Josh's frustrations has been that, like, you know, he'll get, he tried to be more flexible and like, working with people to find every path possible that would help them avoid the hearing examiner, cause there's ways to get there, but sometimes it takes time and you have to shift, you know, your efforts a little bit. And then, so in the course of doing that, things take a lot, can sometimes take longer, and then he gets dinged, like, oh, and then, and then it gets waved in his face, like, this is taking eighteen, yeah, this is taking eighteen months or two years, like, well, yeah, because we were trying to, we could've just said no, and then you would've had to go straight to the hearing examiner, you would've done faster, but you would've spent more money, you know, ultimately. So it's just a balance of trying to find that flexibility, but yet at a certain point, people need, you gotta make a decision and people have the alternative path, the reasonable use exception, I don't think that's a very good path. I would, I would like to see, you know, staff continue to work with folks because, you know, the hearing examiner, there's expense to it, but it's not so much about the money, it's, I think if you actually apply the reasonable use law, it's very tight, it's very restrictive. It's not always followed, sometimes it's just, you know, people get so frustrated and that, boards accounting commissioners, um, hearing examiners, like, you know, but if you really apply that law as it's written, there, it doesn't give a ton of latitude, so working with folks, I think administratively is, is useful. See if they can find a, a lot, a legal pathway for without having to go through that R E, very, very rigid R U E framework.
Unfortunately, to beat the constraints of the new law, we're not gonna be able to do that, we're not gonna have that luxury.
It's gonna have to go, no, you don't, you don't meet it, there's your, yeah, it's might, might be more frustrating.
Your permits incomplete, sorry. We haven't worked this out in this much time, you haven't brought us what you need, sorry. Um, it's, it's so that we're meeting our required, um, timeframes for a decision. So that's going to really limit their ability to, to have this continuous, let's work toward yes. I will make sure that they get in a work session sometime in April to talk about what their process is and what's changing with the new system, cause it's exciting.
Commissioner, yeah, I know, the only thing that I had was just, uh, I know you and I, I think Commissioner Edwards too, we got an email about some kinda TV thing, Dennis Quaid's production group or something, they wanna, they, they do these little segments and they wanna focus on Thurston County and they want, I think it just came to the three of us, cause they didn't know there were two other commissioners.
Randy Quaid, I'd be in, Dennis Quaid, I'm out.
Yeah, so I don't know what that's about, and the board needs to decide anything or discuss anything, did you see the email?
Uh, yes, and, uh, Taylor is, Taylor, I know Taylor was finding out more information.
The P I O's got an eyebrow up.
Yeah, what, what are we talking about?
I don't know anything about it, it was just an email that came through.
Yeah.
Yeah, please do, if there's, I'm happy to participate if it seems legit, you know?
Well, I didn't know it went out to multiple, I just received it, and so I was.
I went and received it as well.
Yeah, Taylor was just gonna see if it was legit or not, or was just.
Be sure it wasn't a credit card number.
I think Tom seemed to have looked at a couple of examples, like, they, they're like these little ten minute, they're not like little segments that get shown here, there and everywhere, I can't remember, she explained it to me, but they're short, they are legitimate thing, that, that does exist.
Is it the cool, uh, talking about wonderful things our county did, that we've tried to pitch to the board before? You weren't interested.
Is that right? Uh, okay, uh, Commissioner Klaus, anything you wanted to come to?
Yeah, I, I was looking up Dennis Quaid, I'm like, who is that?
Randy Quaid's his brother, he's the crazy one.
He's married to Meg Ryan.
Randy Quaid's the one that went like, was squatting in a mansion and like, he's nuts.
Geez, I did tell my mom and my mom was very excited about.
Randy Quaid was a movie star like in the eighties, basically.
I only have one quick thing, um, there have been some requests about a comment box in the lobby area from people who have been using the services here, um, wondering if we can have some sort of box for feedback. I don't know if that would be too difficult, but I guess a couple of people have brought it up now.
For the public out here, yeah.
Sure.
We have emails, let them know that.
They want the instant confirmation.
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah, we used to have that in, uh, uh, permitting section, so we can certainly put a box, there's still one in permitting, so, yeah, but we can put one out into the, like, on the, um, reception area.
Yeah, that'd be perfect, sure, thank you, that's all I had.
All right, any other commissioner items? We're back tomorrow at nine AM.
Oh, wait.
Yep.
Uh, so, sorry, if I may, um, I passed out, Commissioner Minzer had some talking points for the meeting with D and R on Wednesday, I sent that to your aides on, uh, late Friday. So you should all have those now, and then, um, I sent some questions to D and R, I tried to take the talking points, kinda boil them down uh, into what would be a kind of an outline to use with D and R, and I'd sent that to you.
I saw it.
And so.
I've added a few things unfortunately, as I continue to think so.
Okay.
I mean, there's nothing that you said that was not off-base, but I've kinda supplemented just with more stuff that I think about.
I figured as much as, we've only got an hour with D and R and everything I put would take up that time and more and, and open the door to anything else you wanted to introduce.
Yeah, it won't be difficult, I mean, it's like, it's just a few more kinda points I wanted to make about, kinda where, why we're all positioned over here, along the same lines.
Right.
Nothing that the board hasn't heard before.
Right, so I'll have that agenda, uh, handy. I'll get it so we can post it, um, this afternoon. That's what I have.
Okay, if there's nothing further, we will be adjourned back tomorrow for agenda setting at nine AM.